Collier Meeting, order. First thing we have is a couple of public hearings. Mr. Goulard.
For those in attendance tonight, we actually have three public hearings on three tracts of property where the property owners desire to have their property annexed into the city of Fort Oglethorpe. We have already had two readings, and tonight we're going to do a public hearing, and then we're going to do the final readings. And what I would like to do is, if you have any concerns or would like to make a comment on the particular annexation, is to please come forward, sign your name, and state what your position is. The first public hearing will be on ordinance number 2014-16. It's annexation Bernard H. Brown III and Britt H. Brown. Location of the property is 647 Scruggs Road, map and parcel number 0010D003. Is there anyone in attendance here tonight who would like to comment on this annexation? Let the record reflect that there's no one that wants to comment on that annexation. The next annexation is ordinance number 2014-17. It's annexation Billy Marie Crawford, Crawford Lane, map and parcel number 0003L005. Is there anyone in attendance tonight that would like to comment on that annexation? If so, please come forward. And the final tract to be annexed, and is the subject matter of this public hearing, is ordinance number 2014-18. Annexation Larry Lewis and Billy Marie Crawford, located at Number 1 Crawford Lane, map and parcel number 0003L006. Is there anyone in attendance here tonight that would like to comment on that annexation? Let the record reflect that there's no one in attendance that wishes to comment on that annexation. And with that being said, Mayor, I would close the public hearings.
Thank you, Mr. Goulard. Now we'll call the regular scheduled council meeting of January 26, 2015. Call it to order. Mr. Smith is not here today. I understand he is sick. So, Mr. Rogers, would you do the invocation for us, please?
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for your love. Thank you for all you've done for us. Lord, give us wisdom as we conduct the business of the city. In Jesus Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda, reading of the minutes of the previous council meeting. If all the members of council have had an opportunity to review those, is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Crawford.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rogers. Any further discussion? All of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimous. Next item on the agenda is comments from the mayor. First of all, I'd like to welcome everybody here. It's cold outside. Thank goodness we're not in New England. Hopefully, none of that air comes flowing down to the south. We're going to talk about the housing authority, city of Fort Oglethorpe. Housing Authority is a separate entity. You have a five-person board in the Housing Authority. Those directors are served, they are appointed for five-year terms. They are the governing authority of the Housing Authority. They hire a executive director to run the Housing Authority on a day-to-day basis. That employee works for the Housing Authority, the Board of Directors. They don't work for the mayor. They don't work for the city council. They're not a part of the city. That employee works for that Housing Authority, that Board of Directors. It's an at-will employe. The Housing Authority is a very good organization. We have 67 families that live there. And, or, unless I'm mistaken, there are 67 families, or thereabouts. Their public housing is there to serve the citizens of our community, those people that cannot provide a place in the private sector. We've got, and I very seldom ever go there. It's, my grandmother lived there when, back in the 1970s, in post-homes. It was a great place for her to live. She had a very limited income. She was on SSI. Her name was Frankie. Somebody called her Tanky, and she was actually, she was about as wide as she was tall, and she was kind of built like a tank. But she was a very special person, and she lived in post-homes probably seven, eight years, like seven, eight years of her life. And that's how I got to know about post-homes. Patterson Place was not there during that period of time. The mayor makes the appointments to the Board of Trustees of the Housing Authority. Once those appointments are made, they're for five-year terms. It's out of, the mayor has nothing whatsoever to do with it. It's not a city entity. It becomes an entity that's self-governing. The five-person board, they communicate with HUD. So, the year 2010 was an unusual year for the city of Fort Oglethorpe. In the year 2010, we actually had three mayors. Ronnie Collym took office January 1 of that year and passed away, well, actually, continued his term. He passed away during that year. On the year 2010, there were two appointments that were due to be reaffirmed or reappointed during, for the Housing Authority. Mr. Cobb did not make those appointments before he passed away. He passed away, and then Lewisham was mayor pro tempore, and he served out until a mayor could be elected to serve the unexpired term of Mr. Cobb, which was this mayor. I took office November 6, 2010. At that time, I didn't have a clue there was two appointments of the Housing Authority. In May of 2011, this mayor found out that there was two appointments that had expired on January 1, 2010. In a timely manner, this mayor reappointed two members that their term had expired on January 1, 2010. Our city attorney has now advised me that those two individuals that were reappointed in May of, I think, May the 9th, am I correct? Is that the date? Whatever that date, is it, in May of 2011 will expire May of 2016. I have spoke with HUD on a couple of occasions today. The individual I spoke with, with HUD today, last time I spoke with her, she was on her way home. I spoke with her on her cellphone. She was going to get with her director tomorrow, and her and I spent 30, 40 minutes talking. And it was a good conversation. And, so, right now, this mayor thought he had two, and I'll show you the documentation. When I found out, in 2011, that there was two unappointed positions there that had not been reappointed, I got with the city attorney, and, or, that's who informed me, I believe, that those appointments needed to be made. He received from the city clerk in Fort Oglethorpe a list of those people, and when their terms expired, and I got a copy of that from the city attorney. Since this mayor's part-time, and all mayors in Fort Oglethorpe are part-time, I took that document, it's a list showing who the members of the Housing Authority were, and when their appointments expired, and taped it to the wall in my office at home, which, I got a copy of it here. But anyway, and on that copy, I wrote down, it said expiration of those terms were 2010, January 20, 2010. So I took five years from 2010 and wrote expiration date of those terms, January 20, 2015. But the mayor had not made those appointments, reappointed those individuals until May of 2011, which the city attorney and I have spoke, those two positions do not actually expire, or are not completed by the city attorney until January 20 of 2016. At that point in time, this mayor had spoke with two individuals, and had sent copies to the director of the Housing Authority with a letter of thank you to the people that had served, thinking that this mayor had two appointments to make on January 20 of 2015, and had spoke with two individuals and sent them letters of appointment to take office on 2015. When the mayor talked to the city attorney, and the city attorney advised him that those appointments were not due until May of 2016, this mayor immediately called the probate judge and said there will not be a sworn in, immediately called those two parties that he had spoke with about appointing as trustees of the Housing Authority, and said, hey, look, boys and girls, there's no appointments to be made at this time. So, there's not appointments to be made. So, that's where this stands at this stage of the game. And, that's where we go. So anyway, the other thing that, and I think that addresses, I think that addresses the Housing Authority situation. Now, I have spoke with HUD today, and we spoke about, this is what we spoke about. And we spoke for an hour, hour and a half, on a couple of occasions, in fact. Did those appointments that were made on May of 2011, do they go, or that, is that appointment retroactive, back to January 1 of 2010, which would make that term expire May, or January of 2015? Or does it begin on May of 2011 and expire in 2016? I've got a ruling from the city attorney that says they expire in 2016. That's, at this stage of the game, you got one, you got a party saying one thing, and then another party saying another, and this mayor, we got a city attorney. I base my decisions on what the city attorney says. That's what we pay Mr. Stoltz for. So, that's where we are on the Housing Authority at this time. Next thing. We had a court case, it was a very interesting court case, it finally went to trial last week, or week before. Our former builder inspector was convicted and sentenced to 10 years in state prison. We do not have a licensed, certified building inspector. Mr. Goulard, is there anything going on as far as the hiring of a building inspector?
We are in compliance with the state law by the posting of the signs that I posted last year. We currently have someone serving in that capacity. I'm not taking any additional applications at this time. I don't really see the need for it yet, but that's where we stand.
Okay. You've answered my question.
You know, we can, you know, we can perhaps discuss these things in an executive session as far as personnel are concerned.
I think you pretty well answered that question. We've got a lot of growth going on in the city of Fort Oglethorpe. The strip center beside Walmart by CBL and Associates, that will officially open latter part of March of this year. They were paving the parking lot yesterday. I know everybody's getting excited about that. The neighborhood market is open, and it's been a huge success. It's, Lynn and I drove by there on the way down here today, and you need a shoehorn to get any more cars in there. It is, it is packed. We in Fort Oglethorpe, as far as commercial growth, and the businesses that we have in the city, we're very business-oriented. We somehow end up successful in spite of ourselves. So, just hope that commercial growth continues to go. Mayor has talked enough. We're going to move on. Zoning matters, we have none. Ordinances, we have, first, our third and final reading, Mr. Goulard?
Excuse me. Annexation, this is third and final reading, ordinance number 2014-16. Be it ordained by the mayor and council of the city of Fort Oglethorpe, Georgia, and it is hereby ordained by the authority thereof, that the following property owned by Bernard H. Brown III and Britt H. Brown, known as 647 Scruggs Road, map and parcel number 0010D003, is hereby annexed into the city of Fort Oglethorpe. That's the third and final reading, and need a motion to approve.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Stinning?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimous. Next item on the agenda, another third and final reading, Mr. Goulard?
Ordinance number 2014-17, and annexation be it ordained by the mayor and council of the city of Fort Oglethorpe, Georgia, and it is hereby ordained by the authority thereof, that the following property owned by Billy Marie Crawford, known as Crawford Lane, map and parcel number 0003L005, is hereby annexed into the city of Fort Oglethorpe.
Is there a motion?
Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself for obvious reasons on this one.
Well, it's since the last name, is it? Is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Gray.
Second.
Second by Ms. Stinning. Any further discussion? Ms. Stinning?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimous. Next item on the agenda, another annexation, Mr. Goulard?
Ordinance number 2014-18, this is third and final reading on this annexation ordinance, be it ordained by the mayor and council of the city of Fort Oglethorpe, Georgia, and it is hereby ordained by the authority thereof, that the following property owned by Larry Lewis and Billy Marie Crawford, known as Number 1 Crawford, map and parcel number 0003L006, is hereby annexed into the city of Fort Oglethorpe.
Is there a motion?
Again, I'm going to recuse myself on this matter.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Rogers?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gray, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? Ms. Stinning?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimous. Next item on the agenda, resolutions, there is none. Unfinished business, there is none. City communications from city clerk, there is none. New business, there is none. City manager report, Mr. Goulard?
Sir, I don't have anything to report at this time.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, city council comments, Ms. Stinning?
Yes, sir. On February 6, the Catoosa Professional Women's Network is meeting at the Renaissance Center at 11:30 a.m. We encourage all professional ladies in Catoosa County to take advantage of this opportunity to network. You can reserve your seat by calling 965-5201. The American Legion and VFW, as everyone knows, works hard together to help those in need in our area. They are hosting a Valentine's dance and dinner on February 13 at 7 p.m. For reservations, you can call 423-645-3378. On Saturday, February 21, the American Legion at 2 p.m. are getting together for Beats for Andrew. Andrew is a six-month-old little boy who was born with HLHS, that's hypoplastic left heart syndrome. He will need a heart transplant, and he needs your help. There'll be live bands, food, and family fun. If you'll go to www.littleironman.webly.com, there's a lot of information on Andrew's journey. And we want to welcome Walmart Neighborhood Market, and thank all those who came to the grand opening, and want to let you know, Ms. Long, that I had no knowledge of the letter that was sent, even though it bears my name on the embossment. Mr. Mayor, closing my comments, sir.
Okay. Mr. Gray?
I have nothing, sir.
Mr. Crawford?
No.
Mr. Rogers?
Nothing.
Next item on the agenda, citizens petition, housing director.
Mayor, I realize that you had something to say about that. Of course, this is not the first time, and I'm sure it won't be the last time, that you and I meet and discuss things like this. I've been in your office twice, and we've had discussions. But most of you know me. If you don't, my name is Sue Long. I'm the director of Fort Oglethorpe Housing Authority, and I've been there for 16 years. Ever since Mr. Long has been in office, I've had nothing but chaos and turmoil. I'm sorry, I hate to put it this way. Every year, there's something. He doesn't work with us. We are a high performer at HUD, and this is not something they give us. This is something that we have to earn, and we work hard for it. I feel that Mr. Long has used his power in office to disrupt the Housing Authority Board and to destroy the act, the claim that we have made, the leadership and the teamwork, and my tenants work together, and it not only affects me, it affects my tenants too. There's got to be something done about this. The latest attempt was last week, when he overstepped his authority by removing the city of Fort Oglethorpe and both stationery from the office of the administrative assistant, and using it to dismiss two current Housing Authority Board members to replace them with his personal selections. This was done with the intent to gain the Housing Authority Board. However, your attempt was in vain, due to your lack of researching the term of, the terms of office, which does not end until 2016. Your authority to replace the board members without first seeking city council approval per the new charter is in violation. Mr. Long made the letter seem official by using city letterhead, which featured the names of all the council members, and this came as a shock to the council members because I asked them, I thought that the council had to ratify an appointment. Mr. Long replaced one of my board members with a lady that had to be removed before because she has MS and unable to get out of the house. I checked with her brother, and her brother said that she doesn't have license, and is very sick and not even able to get out. I checked with another one, and Mr., the other man that was put on my board is already on a board here in the city. My charter says that no one that's on a board can be on another board. My board members have to take an oath of office and sign an oath of office at the office. We have never had anyone other than the last person that was appointed sworn in by someone other than the council at the Housing Authority. In fact, I asked Mr. Lowry, I said, why did, what happened? Well, I was called, and I didn't know whether to or not, I'd never, I said, how many Housing Authority people have you sworn in before? Well, none. Well, what are you going to do about it, Ms. Long? I said, Jean, I'm not going to do anything about, what are you going to do about it? And he said, from now on, I'll research, and I'll find out. But you're right, I've never appointed a Housing Authority person before. They do swear, and they do take an oath of office, and the oath of office does say that they're not affiliated with anything to do with the city. They don't owe the city money, and they're not involved in a lawsuit or anything with the city. They don't hold any other office in the city. I visited you twice to discuss face-to-face your resentment of my position and the destruction of communication caused by the continued attacks, and yet, even with a witness in your room, you've not stopped the slander and the attempts to disrupt the peaceful existence that has flourished at the Housing Authority. Sir, just exactly what do you want to do? What is your intent? I'll tell you what I feel like. I feel like that this is a continuation of March the 22 event, and I can assure you that I'll not continue to go through this. I can, and I will seek legal action if you do not leave us alone.
I appreciate the comments. This mayor has no, once the Housing Authority member is appointed, this mayor has, it's not a city function. The director of the Housing Authority does not work for this city. The director of the Housing Authority works for the five-person directors of the Housing Authority. That's who that individual works for. It's an at-will employe, and if there is issues with the Housing Authority, that director should report that back to the Board of Trustees of the Housing Authority, whom that individual works for, not the city. It's a HUD project, and it's, this mayor, every member of that Housing Authority, all five of those board members, have been appointed by this sitting mayor, the two that were reappointed, that their term expired on January 20 of 2010, and in addition, the other two members that are on that Housing Authority Board. So all five members of those board members have been appointed by this mayor. This mayor does not make it a point to go to the Housing Authority, has not been in the Housing Authority in at least a couple of years. The time prior to that, and by the way, the individual that received a letter to be appointed to the Housing Authority is also a member of a board in this city. When I discussed with that individual his appointment to the Housing Authority Board of Trustees, it was well-understood that if that individual was appointed, that he would immediately resign that position with the City Planning and Zoning Board. So that is a mute issue. This mayor, as he so stated earlier in his comments about the Housing Authority... This mayor, as he so stated earlier in his comments about the Housing Authority, public housing is a very important part of our system in this country. I had a grandmother that lived there the last few years of her life. This was back in the 1970s in post home. Patterson Place was not there then. My grandmother was one of those individuals that could not provide a place in the private sector. That's what public housing is for. That's what it's for. And she drew something like $300 or $400 a month. She passed away in 1978, on my youngest daughter's birthday, in fact. And she was a very special lady, and post homes provided her a place to live with a good quality life the last four, five, six, seven years of her life. I don't know exactly how many of those years, but anyway, enough said. Next item on the agenda, executive session. Do we have anything, Mr. Stoltz?
I think we need to go to-
You've already spoke, so that's it.
I think we need to go to executive session over some personnel problems, so I'll make a motion for it.
Second.
So, executive session, okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Well, executive session for personnel issues. Is there a motion to come out of executive session?
Motion.
Have a motion?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
This council's out of executive session. We discussed personnel, and we also talked about the liability on building inspections, and I think we're all on the same page there. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We really missed Johnny Smith on that one.